... The Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln. 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 The Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln.
I'm gonna ask if all of us, if we can recite the Lord's Prayer together tonight. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will come. Thy will be done, good as it is done. Thy will be done, and be given on all sides of us. And we shall see it together, for it is light, with the children of God. For there is a heaven above, and a hell below. And there is a heaven above, and a hell below. Amen.
Thank you.
And... Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln. The Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln. The Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln. The Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln.
You're coming in here?
Yeah, I'll be right back.
At this time, I would like to have the part of the Church of Lincoln.
President.
Mayor, I want to tell you something.
President.
I want to say that the Lord has been...
President.
The Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln.
President.
The Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln.
President.
The Church of Lincoln, the Church of Lincoln.
Mayor Anderson, I find it very important that...
Thank you. We're going to mention to Dr. John E. Denser about medical priorities. Um, two, three times two hundred and four, which are two and twenty-three. Uh, what says, "The year 2020 should be 2022," from last month's meeting. Um, at this time, I'd like to mention to the fellow representatives of Dr. John's prayer.
And that session.
Proper and open second, all in favor of our show here. Next up is, uh, the approval of words. From Tuesday, December 2021, Central Rock City Council. Words from Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, Public View. And Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, Lighthouse City Council. No... Motion. No doubt about that, all the votes, but a crime. All right. All in favor of our show here. As we know, we've got some new equipment. They've taken it to the hospital, um, for your efforts and your setup tonight. So this is a trial run. Remember, you all are making history tonight. At this time, I have some present questions coming. And the first one is by Lighthouse Mayor's place in Mr. Simon Alex. Would you please come?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you council members. I don't know if y'all can hear me, for letting me come talk tonight. I'm Cecilia May, the Executive Director of Lighthouse Ministries. The main reason I'm here tonight is really just to get the word out, to make families in Lower Florence County, Lake City, aware of Lighthouse Ministries' services and what we're offering. Um, Lighthouse Ministries has been serving the community for about 25 years. I've been with Lighthouse Ministries for about 15. And we just wanted to make sure that the families in this community were aware of the service we provide. I was looking at the numbers, and last year, we only served 83 families in this area, which I feel is low. And so I've been trying to get the word out that we are helping. Our main focus is prevention. We want to prevent families from becoming homeless. We want to help them stay in their homes, stay in a safe environment. Lighthouse Ministries helps with rent, utilities, that could be water, or gas, or electric. And we also help with deposits for rent or utilities. And what we've noticed, um, I think over the years, a lot of reasons why families were reluctant, possibly, to get services through Lighthouse Ministries was because they would have to travel to Florence to do that. You know, with COVID, we found there's some good things that actually have come out of it. It's made us rethink how to serve the whole county of Florence and all the families in Florence. So what we have done is allow families to receive services just by telephone. So that barrier of having to drive all the way to Florence County is no longer there. And we just want to get the word out that if a family is in need, if they need help just getting through a month or getting through a crisis with COVID, you know, a lot of families have been, um, affected financially due to COVID for a lot of different reasons, especially now, now that the numbers have gone back up. You know, families are having to take time off of work because they've been sick, or a family member's sick, or a child's sick. Um, so I just want to get the word out that we are helping. We've actually, through generous grants and donations, received additional funds for families that have been affected by COVID financially. We can actually assist with rent and utilities for up to a couple, three to five, three to six months, to help them through that crisis. So I'm really here just to make sure that the community is aware that we are here to help. Um, I can tell you, just in the past 12 months, we've helped 29 families in Lake City that have been affected by issues with COVID. And I just, that's really what I, what I came to do. Um, we have other services, but the main focus is the basic needs, um, in order to be able to help those families through their time of need. I'm trying to be more proactive in the Lower Florence County area, just to make sure that families are aware that we are providing those services. Um, do y'all, I mean, I don't know if y'all have asked questions, or...
Well, I do. Thank you for coming to see me. And you know, I go all the distance. Oh, but, um, do you know that I have a question or anything?
I do, I brought some, but I didn't know how, if you wanted me to leave it somewhere or hand it to you. Sorry. I didn't want, I didn't want to assume anything.
And you are still in the unit where agents are?
We are, and I am a agency, yes. Um, and... We just want to make sure that the families are aware. That's our main focus tonight, is to making sure that families are aware. And all they have to do is call. They don't have to come to Florence or anything like that. It's really made a big difference in how we serve the community.
If I may ask, yes. If I may ask, what, what way have y'all advertised in this area? Like, those 29 families, how did they hear about you?
Word of mouth. So, um, I actually did put a article in the paper for a couple of weeks, but that gets to be a little pricey. Um, word of mouth, trying to work with those agencies. Um, we have Echo in the area, Ann is here, work with, with her, just trying to get the word out. Um, Mayor Anderson, he's aware of us. I, um, sent letters to landlords to let them know that we're helping with rent, just different things that I felt it was, I needed to come and just make y'all here and that we are providing the services. We have always provided the services. I think it's just getting that word out and making sure that everybody's known, that you can call us to get that happening.
We, we will have, uh, Lon Tracy or Jonathan contact you tomorrow, so we can put something on our website and on our Facebook page.
Okay.
So we can get your message out to our...
That would be correct.
Is, is that Ann Goudy that you're speaking about?
Yes, yes. She's with Echo. So, um, we work with all the different agencies. We work with Echo. Echo, um, works more towards homeless families, homelessness.
Yes, yes.
And we are here to try to prevent homeless.
Okay.
So we work together to get those, um, those families that are in those needs, to be promoted.
I think Ann actually came and spoke at a council meeting a few years ago. Um, have you thought about maybe putting the information around in different businesses here in Lake City that could possibly help maybe like doctors' offices, where you get like a lot of traffic in, in and out?
I have not, but I can do that. I mean, you don't want to come into an area and put yourself on anyone, you know, and you want to make sure you have those relationships, they understand what you're doing.
I see.
Because we're not here asking for anything, we're just trying to make sure that the community is ready for service. But, um, no, I'd, I would love to, to have a help.
The Go to Resource Center would be a great place, too, if you...
And I have, I have had to talk with them on numerous occasions.
Okay. Well, thank you for everything that you're doing.
And again, we go back many years. Thank you so much for all, all your talent and services. And thank you for coming tonight. We certainly appreciate it. And, uh, we will get, as soon as you get that information to the appropriate folk, we'll make sure we get it posted and published.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have GMK Associates, Lake City Culture, Art, and Educational Events Center.
And council members, I'll have, um, the clerk of law, who's been talking with you about this.
Yep, thank you. Right there. Um, my name is Brian Brown, and I'm with, a partner with GMK Associates. And we were hired by Lake City, your procurement process, to work on the, uh, the Drawlson Tech building down there for the event center. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. And any questions you can ask, and I don't want to bore you with all, a lot of detail, but I'll keep it simple. Um, now, you're gonna have, is this where you'll be on this side, coming from here to there? The board? I don't know if, if you want to, once you're out of there, down Cold Road, you've got that old Drawlson Tech building down there. So, uh, what we're gonna do is, is to turn that, we've been hired to turn that into an event center for you. So right now, half of the building there, this half is not there, but you've got the existing facility there, and I'll show you a little bit about the inside of it. But this is about what it's gonna look like when we get through. There'll be a gym, uh, for you, Parks and Recreation, on the right side of it. This is spacing the building from the road. And then, in the existing building, will be the cultural arts and education places in there. This will be approximately a little over 20-something thousand square feet total. You've got about, you've got about 11,000 square feet already there that you own in part of the property. This will be down on Cold Road at the end of, at the end of the airport there. So this will give you an idea of what, what it's gonna look like. In the building. The building, piece of property there, this is just another indication. I'll, I'll leave these boards with you. And in there is, uh, is the property that's around the building that's already there. We'll add on to it. One stipulation that we've got in there, there is some weapons around the building. We've got to deal with some weapons there, but nothing out of the ordinary. But it fits on the property very nicely. There's plenty of place for parking. Uh, the entry will be, come in from this side. This is Cold Road down here, and it will be coming in from the front rail. And, uh, I'll put more design out, but the, the, the product fits very nicely. Own piece of property is already there. Uh, and here it is. Okay. Okay. The building itself will be in, you have three main parts to the building. One, you have the entrance here in the front, the one near the gym on the right side. You'll have your, uh, educational rooms, classrooms, and all that sort of in the middle. And then on the outside, you'll have your events. So it's a multi-use building. Uh, the gym will hold approximately, uh, 300-plus people in there for, whether it's a basketball, volleyball, just all kind of, all events. It's a multi-purpose, uh, facility will be inside this building here. It'll have locker rooms, it'll have bathrooms, it'll have concession, and it'll have offices for the Parks and Recreation offices in, in the building there. So this is one of the, there's a lot of, uh, area that separates the two buildings. It's glassed in, that you can, that way, if there's something going on, or a gym, you can also have something going on in the inside of the building. So you're having classrooms, or you're having a wedding, or events, or just anything, so it can be all going at the same time without interrupting each other. So basically, you can have these sections over here where the events, you can walk, have it working, petition off, it can hold as much as, as up to 300, a little over 300 people in there, and sitting down and eating. Uh, or it can have individual events. It's got a brides room, uh, for changing, whatever the event is, and so just all kind of things in there. On the cultural arts side or the educational side, you've got these same classrooms that can be all one or petitioned off. So plenty of space in there to do a lot of things in there. And again, the gym, it's, it's a full gym, uh, and can be used for all kind of events. There's nothing it can't be used for. So, uh, we'll have somebody asking today about storage. Well, there'll be some storage on the back to put all the tables in and out, but also it's gonna have a catering kitchen. No cooking, but you can cater in all the foods. It'll have a hot place and that, and for all the events that can go on in here. So just a lot of, uh, multi-use for what the building can be used for, and, uh, very exciting. So, uh, I've visited a couple of places that'll do this similarly, and it's worked out very well. The biggest thing is for it to be able to be used multi-uses for a lot, for a lot of uses to it. So that's where we headed with it, and, uh, uh, we even...
Ron, if you will mention the fact that we can push the bleachers back, which holds 300, and now you have an open, open room there, how many will that open room hold if you put seating in the floor and not use the bleachers?
It'll hold up, up to about five, 500, 600 people. So it'll be, once these bleachers go back, you're gonna have plenty of room for chairs out here, again, multi-use. And, uh, so a lot of room in there, at least 500 plus.
And the stairway at the end, it will lead to a mezzanine.
Mezzanine, the bulk.
Above those bleachers, the second level, the story.
Those bleachers out there.
Or whatever we wish to.
Right.
Um, do you have an expected date of like when this construction probably will begin and possibly estimated time on when you may finish?
My, my first blush at it is, we're right now going from schematics to in, to design development, and I will start into getting costs, it will start going into, um, the architectural, uh, process. I would like to have that done around July, first of July, and, and at the same time, we'll start the bidding process for construction. So maybe construction to get started, I'm looking at, I'd look at August.
Uh, Mayor, Councilor, if I make sense, could you stand and give your opinion on if this meets your needs, and as it is, everything that you have, um, communicated with Bron about?
Uh, yes. Um, from what I'm seeing tonight, I just noticed that the gym was switched to the other side. Um, but listening to him, that makes sense.
Yeah, the only reason it switched is since it's from the other side is we couldn't get all, we couldn't get around the building.
Right.
It remember, it's supposed to the property line, we gotta have an easement on that, but other than that, we just turned it all around. It's just reversed, so...
And I know he mentioned, um, about having basketball, different sports and, and, um, et cetera, in the facility. It can also be used for, um, singing events, gospel programs, country, uh, rock, pop concerts, so, uh, it can be used for that as well. So, uh, I think... So I think that this facility would be a great asset for Lake City. If we work together and apply ourselves, we can make a great community here. And we can have a whole lot of interesting things taking place right here in Lake City.
So the follow-up line is, it will meet your needs?
Yes.
And your future needs?
Yes.
Easy question. I would like to try to start construction by, you know, July. But that's gonna be predicated on this COVID market we're in, as we all know. I'm trying to, we, we have a number of these projects going on. And what I've got to really work hard on is pricing to make sure we, we don't get taken advantage of with the situation that's going on in the country right now.
How come the steel price, so we're aware of that?
Yeah. The steel price, since you floated the bond, and from the time that we were slated through your process, your process, has gone up over almost thirty-six percent on steel, and it's continuing to climb. So it's just taken off. And it's supposed to relax, but it'll never go back to what it was. But it is what it is. So we're gonna have to look at that situation. And it's not, it's not, it just got, we gotta be aware of it. That's all.
Is it, is there a stage in that area? A stage in the gym?
Just like Cynthia was just talking about, you already have a portable stage here. So that will go into storage. And then when it's not being used, you wanna have an event where it's gospel, singing, whatever you wanna do, all this can go back, chairs can go out there. And there'll be a stage to be put on the end of it here. So it truly, truly, it could be multi-use. I was just, I went to visit another one of these facilities similar to this, so I could get something to compare to. And they were actually having a pickleball tournament, a regional eastern pickleball tournament. And they were flipping it that day to have, it was, Cynthia was talking about it, a country artist coming in to sing that night. And then they were going into volleyball tournaments for gals. So this is the kind of stuff you wanna do. It's for the community. It's to flip it and move it around. But the stage can go in here, because you've already got that purpose. Stage is already here.
The gym is, that's anybody, right?
Brian, man.
This is, this is the existence.
I, what you're talking about, is it any problem in working on the left side of this? And we're waiting on steel prices to come down?
No, no, no. We, we can work on this as we do that, or we, either way. But we're gonna, maybe phase a little bit, but yes, there's no problem doing that.
With the class of people that we can actually hold in the gym, plus the other area, how about how is the parking looking?
Right now, there's two hundred and sixty spaces out there, around, all the way around. And we need to, if it looks like it's gonna take off, and we're gonna have a large, large event in there, then there is space in here to make some more parking. But right now, you're at about two hundred and sixty spots.
Okay. Enough for buses?
Enough to meet your code.
Okay.
Meet the codes.
About buses, she said, things like that.
I'm sorry. I hadn't thought about buses, but I'll, I'll...
Because I mean, the tournaments are gonna happen.
Exactly. Yeah, we need, we need to deal with that. Uh, some of the, one of the things that we had talked about, Cynthia talked about, well, that's one reason why I wanted to get these locker rooms in here. So when visitors come, you've got a place to change. And they're not going inside bathrooms, in the regular public bathrooms. But that's a good point you have there, and that. Uh, and that two sixty also includes the handicap, all the, some handicap spots, too. So to meet those codes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I could talk about it all night, but I don't want to bore you with it.
It's not a bore. It's a great asset.
I think it's, uh...
Great addition.
From all my time to doing this, I think this is very exciting for Lake City. I'm not here to sell you. I'm just telling you, it's, it's gonna be quite a thing. And all the ones that I've been to, they're well-known. And so I applaud you for, for going forward with it.
And mention the fact that when you visited, what they were missing when they felt there?
Yeah, I was over in Lawrence, looking at Lawrence, when it's called Springs in Lawrence. They've done exactly this. They did it about four years ago. I wanted to visit them because I wanted to look at the gym floor. Everybody's got different types of flooring out there. But one, I asked them, if they had to do it all over again, what would they miss? And Cynthia, it's one of your things. They didn't do locker rooms. They didn't do enough storage. And they started out, and I'm gonna go ahead and answer this question. They started out, was a full cook kitchen. And they said they had to stop that immediately, because people go in there and cook and burn the place up and leave all the food there. So those were the three items, the locker rooms, the kitchen, and, uh, and the, uh, what was the other thing, William? The locker room, kitchen, and, uh, oh, storage, storage. Storage for all the tables and stuff like that.
And I will just throw out there, we already have people, i.e. the hospital, the new one, wanting to know when this is gonna be ready, because they need a place to have meetings.
Yeah.
Um, one other question I have, I'm not sure if you can answer, William. The lighting in the area, will there be good lighting in all around the building?
One of the things that we haven't talked about, and I'll talk about it in another session, is, uh, the road going out on Cold, we're gonna look at that road, beautify that. And all that's gonna have lighting, it's gonna be, have to be welded up at night for security and all other kind of things like that. It's one of the things that I thought, I, I put in this board here on the front of it. This is a electronic board. They were gonna have in the front of it, they would say, like, family reunion, the mayor Anderson reunion or whatever. This board will be corresponding with a board out on the highway. So people can see what's going on, and you can change it all the time. So yes, you'll have the lighting, you'll have to have all that for security and stuff like that.
Because Mayor Council, as you've noticed, on some of the agendas we've been going through, we've been annexing property on Cold Road, people are wanting to come in. We've challenged Haiti to come up with grants so we can beautify Cold Road from this parky all the way down with sidewalks, with lighting, with roads, with trees, and actually breathe in the road. So we're, we're thinking in the future to beautify that area and make it more attractive to anybody.
Councilman Cook?
What type baskets are supposed to be?
The flooring, I'm not sure yet. There's about seven or eight different ones out there. The one that I went to, Lawrence, they have basketball on there. They, they don't put anything, they don't have a protective thing to go across the floor. And they'll have dances in there, and they have ladies in there with high heels. So it's a multi, I don't know, but there's four or five different types of floor we're gonna look at. But I really liked the floor they had, because they didn't have to have extra cover to go out over the top of it. And what's crazy, what was unusual, I was over in, I was over in Evans, Georgia, looking at theirs over there, was the weddings that you, that a lot of people like to have, that we're thinking about on this side, they like to have it in the gym. Because they can put the canapes up, and it's just really cool stuff they were doing. But to answer your question, it's, it's gonna have to be some type of tartan rubber floor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Next item is public comment period. Notes on our comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person. No personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. Council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please state your name and address for the record as you come.
Good evening. Each have one. My name is Edward, nineteen-two year. I live in Lake City by address four thirteen Patty Avenue. And I'm dealing with concerns that we've had a rash of shootings the past two years. Where I live at, I live on Patty Avenue over from Ron McNair. And back in there around the projects and all, sometimes like OK Corral, it's just shooting. And you're going up hitting the floor, going in your bathroom, other parts of the house. And we have elderly people, a few that live there. And my neighbor, she's eighty-seven years old, and she called me. I had to get out on the floor. I'm sixty-four, and sometimes I get on the floor. I don't get up just like that. So just imagine an eighty-seven-year-old lady, she's getting on the floor because of the shooting going on. We had three shootings last week. One went in one of my neighbor's house. And a week before, a few weeks before, one of my neighbor, he told me, he said, one bullet struck his house. And we don't, and one thing, we don't see, it's not like before, I, I haven't seen a police ride through there in the past three or four years. Just ride through our area. Maybe it, maybe it's off, maybe it's off limits to ride through there. I don't know the reason why. But I would see a police vehicle, approval, ride through there back in the day. Periodically, they would ride through the neighborhood and things. And even though, uh, it's not like it was back then. But back then, they'd ride through the neighborhood, and some of the guys, they're doing stuff with the police coming. But now the police don't come at all. And I don't understand the reason why all the shootings, the past two or three years, we've had this shooting, and we know it's gang-related. It has to be.
Has anybody been arrested today?
Nope. No mark, to my report, no one has been arrested or anything for it. You know, and then you're afraid to walk at your house, you walk at your house sometimes. You go back in the house.
Richard, we'll give the chief an opportunity to respond to that when he gives his report. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kevin Colette. Address is at eight seventy-seven Hough Matthews Road, here in the city of Lake, uh, here in Lake City. I'm too also concerned about the rash of shootings that's going on. I have two teenage grandsons. They also attend Ron McNair. I'm concerned because these shootings, they might possibly be gang-related or juvenile or, or whatever. And I'm concerned that it's gonna trickle from the streets onto the school campuses. Be it Ron McNair, be it Lake City High. We need to get a handle on it as parents, grandparents, concerned adults. With law enforcement, whatever they're doing there, doing it the best they can. But we need as concerned parents get on top of it. That being said, I sat here and I noticed that you're Parks and Recreation. I noticed something in those plans. You're addressing the internal part of the building. What about the external? I didn't see anything about ball courts or, or anything for outside activities. Basketball court, volleyball, weddings, all that's all fine and dandy. What about them playing ball outside? Baseball, soccer, those are hot, uh, sports now. Those are team activities. I have spoken with someone, say, has PAL got together with the other civic organizations? The Divine Nine, the sororities, and returners, the Masonic Orders? Got together, sat down with them, says, hey, let's bring back Little League baseball. Let's bring back those activities to get these young people active in something other than the video games, or sitting around thinking of something nonsensical to do. So I just ask that we all sit down and start putting our hands together with PAL and Boys and Girls Club, Parks and Recreation, and let's come up with something cross street for these young people to start doing. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Councilor Hannah. My address is three hundred Spruce Street, Lake City, South Carolina. I have been in Lake City all of my life. The random shootings that have transpired throughout our community is just, it's just not gonna get. Because we are, my husband and I, we were victims of this. Uh, December twenty-seventh, that was a Monday night after seven. There was a shooting up from Spruce Street, right around to Moore Street. Three bullets entered our home. And one went through the headboard, up to another wall. One went down, and he found the bullet in my nightstand. It wasn't my bedroom, and it was another room in my house. Okay, now, since I have some clothes and stuff in my closet, there's still a bullet in there. I'm happy now to take out stuff and try to find it. But one thing I can truly say, when I call, they came. The victim's advocate, she called, and she asked if we needed any services, counseling, or if they're gonna try to work on some resources. Now, it's a difference between fireworks and gunshots. And during that time, it was Christmas, so you wouldn't really say, oh, those are fireworks. But what happened that night, I was in a room, and I heard the shots. And my automatic response was to get on the floor. We didn't know it struck the other room until I went in there. Everything was shattered. I took pictures, the cops took pictures. And one thing I want to say again, the investigator and the police officers, they were doing their job. I know it's hard, but something has to give. We can't just go around and just let it happen, because somebody innocent is gonna be killed. So I don't know what the plan is. I know they've taken all of our information, and I don't know what else is gonna be done. Once we report it, then do they come back and tell us anything? Um, I know that the victim's advocate, she called. So what else are we supposed to, just sit and wait until we get a response from the police department? What do we do? I know you can't answer that right now, but that's something you're gonna have to discuss. But it was very scary. And someone could have been in that room. And I just don't want this to happen, because it has transpired everywhere. Every time now you hear, you know, guns, it's not just those little pow-pow-pow things. These are high-powered guns. And something has to be done. And I don't want to say that, you know, the elderly people around that area, they're scared. And they, they wanna move. So what are we going to do? I'm just a concern citizen. I've been here almost sixty years. Thirteenth.
Early birthday.
My name is Joel Anderson. I live at four seven, Beverly Avenue, Lake City, South Carolina. I'm here about the same situation, the random shootings. Not random, concurrent shootings over and over again, four to five times a week. It sounds like I'm back in the Gulf of Somalia, in the Marine Corps. It's tricky, my PTSD again. It's not just an issue of safety. It's medical issues. We spoke about, we spoke about the lighting and the safety on Cold Road, and putting up lights so that it'll be safe there. How about putting up some nights in the community, so we can have some safety in the community? People don't live, don't deserve to live like this. Most of these houses that are being shot up are paid for. And it's not just an outbreak. It's spreading all over town. Last night, it was on fifty-two. So basically, what I'm saying is, stand by, do nothing, and it's gonna, it's gonna continue to spread. It's gonna be like, it's gonna keep going. What I don't understand is, I understand we have a limited amount of police officers. But sometimes we have to flip the script. And I'm not telling anyone what to do. But when you have two police officers working at night, it's not hard to have them come over here and shoot the whole town up over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Um, I look forward to working with everyone again this year. Um, the problem is this, and I want y'all to take this road home tonight. Lake City is way too dark. When you leave from here, lit up like a Christmas tree. Once you get past Kinko, Lake City goes light. Okay? Moore Street, and once you get past St. Wade, St. James Church, and at Elm Street, that's why I have this elm, put the name of it, keep it amongst there. There's a light, and it's on the, I'm going this way, semi-left, the bulb is on. But guess what? The lights are brighter at St. James. Look down Moore Street, it's too dark. And this is nationwide problem, because I was enrolled in the summer, it's too dark. Dark means there is crime. Infrastructure bills out there, whatever things out there, put lights back in the neighborhood. You, you think it's too dark? Go ride through the city. That's a problem, I think, is too dark. Dark means there is crime, that's what he talking about. Somebody shoots, they get away, who gonna see you? Lake City is way too dark. And Moore Street, one of your busiest streets. The spot when you get to St. Wade, that, let me go behind you, I don't care. They blew behind me, I'm gonna count them lights and see where it started. They zip past me, come all the way down. You know it's gonna be dark, when you get to Davis Street, you best count them. Okay? Now, listen to me, that's a great plan y'all got. Anybody been on the ragged roads? Ragged Cold Road and ragged Davis Street? Y'all got, all this is mine, this is your building, everybody. Anybody get on the ragged road? You gotta take all of this, you make the plan. I know I wasn't allowed to ask questions, but I would wait for somebody to say, ragged road. Y'all know Lake City ragged, got ragged road. What y'all gonna do? I know there's safety on Davis Street. I don't know who on Cold Road, but y'all gonna work with, uh, Rocket Park or somebody? Because that's more attractive on the road, not gonna get better. And Cold Road is set just right. Ride sometime, check your city out. You notice the people who affect you. But the most important thing, y'all, you probably don't like it back in Lake City. Lake City is too dark. And that's why we got all these people complaining about shootings. It's way too dark. Thank you. Y'all know I do that. Y'all need to answer me. And Richard, nice season, I missed you.
Oh, I missed you too. Happy New Year.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, none? Thank you, citizens, for coming out.
Good evening, mayor and council. On our legislative list tonight, we have ordinance number twenty twenty-one five seventy-four, second and final reading. An ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of annexation, annexating property located at two oh eight West Cold Road, tax map number zero zero one six nine thirty-one two fifty-eight, consisting of nine point four two acres owned by Science Limited of Lake City, and all matters related thereto.
Okay, floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one point five seven four for second and final reading.
Move to approve ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-one point five seven four. Crosby.
Properly moved in second. Question? If none, all those in favor, buy show of hands. Next item.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, first reading, an ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval to purchase property located at one oh six East Main Street, tax map number eight zero zero two eight dash oh three dash oh two eight, uh, consisting of one thousand two hundred square feet in the amount of, price has been down again, sixty thousand dollars, and all matters related thereto. Um, the city of Lake City has a shortage of office space with us bringing on the, um, youth intervention program, and we have people sharing offices like Cynthia and Deshaun. And plus, it gets us an opportunity for the city to have presence on Main Street. So for your consideration, we're presenting to you ordinance number twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one oh oh one.
The floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two point zero zero one for first reading.
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two point zero zero one. Second.
Property moved in second. Question?
What building is that?
It's the one that American Waste used to be in. Uh, if you're going down Main Street, cross over the railroad tracks, second one on the left, right next to the Alliance, Great City Greater Alliance.
Who owns it now?
Um, Mary Kelly.
You said it's offered at sixty thousand now?
The asking price was seventy-five, we now have it down to sixty.
Any other questions?
Uh, office space, uh, Deshaun's, uh, Miller will be using it for recreation tourism, and, um, and we're going to make it ADA compliant. So we're hoping to do the, bring some youth in and be able to occupy some in-house activities for the youth in the back.
What's the, um, okay, so it's one thousand two hundred square feet?
Yes, ma'am.
How many parking spaces in the back?
It's downtown parking, so there are parking in the back and plus parking up front. There's a front door and a back door.
Any other questions? If none, all those in favor, buy show of hands.
All right, mayor and council, for your consideration, um, resolution number twenty twenty-two point oh oh one for approval, a resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval to withdraw funds from the local government investment pool and all matters related thereto. In regards to the local investment pool, the finance department, administration department is asking to withdraw four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, these funds are sitting in the South Carolina State Treasurer's local investment pool. Um, it will pay for the Blanding Street Park that we approved last month. It'll pay for the forty-three thousand for the block grant for Blithe Housing, uh, that the grant was approved last month. It will pay cash for the, um, one oh six East Main Street, and the balance will be used to make one oh six East Main ADA compliant clothing cost, uh, making it furniture and bringing it up to code for the city. This is an account that's holding, uh, savings for the city.
The floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero zero one for approval.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two point zero one for approval.
Properly moved in second. Question?
Yes, um, um, how much is actually in the, in, in this account right now?
The local government investment pool has, let's see here. Across from one point five million. So if we take the four hundred out, we'll end up with one point one million.
Any other questions? None, all those in favor, buy show of hands.
Mayor and council, for your approval, resolution number twenty twenty-two point zero zero three. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval to appoint Barbara Bryant, Teresa Presley, to the planning commission and all matters related thereto.
Missed one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. Uh, two twenty oh oh two, twenty twenty-two point oh oh two for your approval. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, of administrative hours change, start date on Monday, February seventh, twenty twenty-two, and all matters related thereto.
And would you give the time?
I'm sorry.
Start time.
The start time will be eight thirty to five o'clock. It will change us from forty hours a week to thirty-seven and a half hours. That still means we would have a forty hour before we would hit overtime, and that's federal law. It would cost us approximately forty thousand dollars to adjust everybody's pay so no one would lose their annual salary.
Okay, um, still an hour for lunch?
Yes, ma'am. And this is administrative, because the police and the fire, field personnel are on different schedules.
Just administrative staff, so the other? This doesn't include all employees?
The field personnel start at seven in the morning.
They come at different times.
Yeah, they start at seven.
So, but they'll still be six, thirty-seven, four, five?
Correct, yes. They're out here before five.
Okay.
Why is the change?
Uh, the request was made, uh, because it's getting dark and we have ladies that are trying to get home in the dark and it's unsafe for them. So I was asked to put together a proposal and what it would cost us. So just an administrative side, it would be about forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, um, we've had a motion, we've already done the questions. Uh, who said, uh, all those?
We're into the motion.
We've had a motion.
We're into the motion, yeah? Okay, we really got, good, thank you very much. Okay, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero zero two. Second.
Property moved in second. Any other questions? All right, if none, all those in favor, buy show of hands. Next item.
Uh, mayor and council, for your approval, again, resolution number twenty twenty-two point oh oh three. A resolution of the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for approval to appoint Barbara Bryant, Teresa Presley, to the planning commission and all matters related thereto.
Okay, the floor is now open for a motion to, uh, approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero zero three for approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Property moved in second, any questions? If none, all those in favor, buy show of hands.
All right, mayor and council, for your approval, resolution number twenty twenty-two point zero zero four. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for approval to appoint Harry Askins to the architectural review board and all matters related thereto.
Okay, the floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero zero four for approval.
Move to approve.
Properly moved in second, any questions? If none, all those in favor, buy show of hands. Next, next item.
All right, um, mayor and council, for your approval, resolution number twenty twenty-two point oh oh five. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for approval to appoint Jennifer Brown, Terry Gaskin Bryant, Margaret B. Robinson, and Maddie L. Thomas to the housing authority board and all matters related thereto.
Okay, floor is now open for a motion to approve twenty twenty-two point zero zero five.
Move to approve.
Property moved in second. Questions or discussions? If none, all those in favor, buy show of hands.
Mayor, mayor and council, for your approval, a resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval to establish a cemetery on the property located at tax map zero zero one nine eight three one zero one seven northwest corner of East Main Street and Cemetery Road and all matters related thereto.
The floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero zero six for approval.
Move to approve. Second.
And properly moved in second, before we move further, um, don't we have some representatives from Mount Clay who will come up and say?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Good evening.
We greatly appreciate y'all approving the, uh, ordinance for that particular property to be established for a cemetery, you know, which it would be great for Lake City as a whole. Being that, uh, we kind of short of various places, we don't want anybody to leave here.
We haven't voted yet, so we, we, but go ahead.
Uh, if anyone has any questions, uh, we took delivery and put some things in place, has them drawn and done, and all of this could be a, uh, if you call the cemetery or group of place, you can, but, uh, I'm open to any questions of any kind of thing to that particular piece of property.
How big a cemetery? How big?
The property is about forty acres, okay? The cemetery has three or four phases in it. All gonna be cemetery. We got plans later on, we'll do something else. Uh, the first portion probably, uh, could be a roadway. We, uh, construct and create a great entrance, do flats on the front part of the cemetery, not stand-up pieces and, uh, develop a roadway and just, uh, revitalize that particular piece of property where the very pretty two buildings at. We looking at doing something there as well. But, uh, first off, it probably, you know, it don't take many acres to a cemetery. So I would say from five to six acres to start with, within the first phase of it, getting started.
Okay, uh, we have Chief Drieger with us, and, um, I spoke with your pastor earlier in the week, and we, uh, we're thinking about future development on that end. So Chief, would you give us some highlights on, on pretty much, and leave that comments, please, for the, for the cemetery?
Uh, just to let y'all know that this property is always agricultural, as y'all seen, y'all was on. I think it's also, it is allowed on agricultural zone, um, but there are certain setback requirements, um, such as all, anything to the cemetery we have in front of make the therapy, that's been thirty-five foot from property line to back. Um, it, we're not worried about some block which, whatever, but the biggest thing is gonna be your setback requirements, um, is thirty-five foot, so like, make the therapy. If city council or anybody, God, have any other suggestions or modifications, now would be the time to discuss that. So you could do increases, you could do restrictions or whatever, based off of what y'all approved. But it is allowed, it is, the ordinances require city councils to approve all cemetery.
That's thirty-five foot, that's off of three, off of three forty-one. How about cemetery?
So it's technically, if you look at your draw, it's not on cemetery road. The side therapy mirrors are twenty-five foot. So off of cemetery road, that mirror is stretching, uh, side therapy mirrors are actually, all those trees are twenty-five foot, so it'd be twenty-five foot. But it's nowhere near that.
So you talking about that cemetery road goes back down.
That's where the old American Eve's and all, so those old buildings, it's actually weller down from where they're, the cemetery. Cemetery closer to the old, um, Cold Road.
Okay, all right, to the, all right, so where in the front, off of three forty-one, they're gonna, if, if, if we're gonna look at future development, where does that measurement come from that tells you what setback should be? Does it come off of the highway itself, or does it come where the beginning of property line?
No, sir, it's for all ordinances, in agricultural zone, setback requirements come off of the property line. So wherever the property line is, off of the roadway and setback requirement in, it would be thirty-five foot.
So at any time that we just, it, that it's mandated that a, that two-lane road turn into a four-lane road, it would be accommodated?
That would be a DOT issue, what would be, so if you're, for future development, say for expansion of the four-lane road beside it, it would be something that would have to be addressed in DOT to determine the exact amount of frontage that would be needed to accommodate that.
Did you all have a specific frontage, a lot already in your plan?
We got, like, the use of, where Anderson, we had said anything, it's coming here. We got, like, the use of, where Anderson, we had set anything, it's coming here, just, just know what we can do, just kind of move forward. So, uh, we in the process of all of that, but, I like to say, but the actual property, I understand what you're saying, that the cemetery will not be, where we get established, which, because you got to cut roadway and beyond to be able to vary both within the space that's needed. So the thirty-five feet off, off the property line, I don't think will be an issue if you really look at some of the drawings that were set to y'all, without entry gate to come off of, uh, True Love Road.
That's the dirt road?
That's, that's, that's dirt road, that was, you know, starting the dirt road and we going down to cut another entry gate and, uh, and had spoken to, uh, Trip Ward, the actual DOT guy, you know, just to know what, what we can do and what's, what they got going on, the thing, the thing we need to do within his part, and everyone in the issue, so, but the thirty-five feet, I, I would think would be an, an issue now, but if it changed to a full-lane highway, well, that's a different story.
The old building, uh, Sierra, that's where cemetery is gonna be, right?
It's got a ditch running, you get away from cemetery road into American Legion building, if you look at the first phase of it, it's got a ditch that runs through the easement, that's through there, okay, hop over there, a portion within there, frontage is kind of what we want to work on. So, with that said, uh, it's be on that opposite side of the ditch, that, that the easement's on.
About True Love Road, you want to get it taped?
Well, uh, right away part, True Love is whoever's else, it's more than just us with that deal on True Love. You know, we bought property and whoever's the owner, the other half, I don't know if it's Smith or whoever, but it's possible. We, we, we trying to put numbers together for payment or second group, fraud, I mean, so many different scenarios. Figuring that out, but yes, something will be done with, uh, True Love Road. And may I ask, what, what is the project back, I see a sign up on the corner of the property that goes back in, what, what's?
To wastewater treatment plant?
Yes, that's a project.
We're doing a multi-million dollar overhaul, expansion on that, and, uh, you know, part of it's from, um, penny sales tax and some other grants that we've been able to receive.
To anyone in all this water table issues or anything like that, I mean, that's what y'all trying to address now, boys. Water table, you, uh, which, and we'll get into that with the DHEC, the song types out there with the maps and the, because I know it's, uh, water, it happens to be in sewer, and all is already there, but it's actual property, and this is all cemetery actually at the back.
Right.
Also, uh, I didn't exactly, you know, uh, what parts of it are, but yeah, we look into, uh, we'll look into designs to know that thirty-five feet off of the actual property line will be, uh, started.
Okay, um, Chief Triggers, um, if we go ahead and grant permission tonight, duly stating that it has to be the thirty-five feet foot line before, for the right of way or setback?
That's already in order.
It's already in order?
We need to make sure that it's where it needs to be, that's why they should have all planned, so we can actually work with them, make sure that they meet all the requirements. They put all information forward in the work room, they actually own it, like you said, the DOT said they didn't see a problem with it.
All right, that's enough. You guys got any questions? Do you want to say, oh, okay. All right, it's been, we need a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two point zero zero six.
Move to approve.
Properly moved in second, any other questions? If none of those are favored by show hand. Okay, next item, administrative report?
Um, Mayor and Council, um, administrative report, we have our financial report. Uh, in the general fund, um, we have a year-to-date revenue at three million, three hundred thirteen thousand, that's forty-four percent of the budget. Uh, this is actually through December thirty-first, and we have expenditures of four million, two hundred thousand, eight ninety-five, that's fifty-six percent of the budget. That's, um, eight hundred eighty-six thousand above our revenue, and as I always say, our revenue taxes come in in the rear, so we haven't reported December's taxes in this number. In the water fund, uh, we have revenue of eight hundred twenty-one thousand, six eighty-nine, fifty-two percent of the budget. We have expenditures in the water fund of six hundred ninety-five thousand, eight forty-three, forty-four percent of the budget. Uh, that's a hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred forty-six dollars surplus in revenue. In the sewer fund, we have one million, five fifty-one, three fifty-seven in revenue, that's fifty-three percent of the budget. We have expenses of one million, four oh seven, which is forty-eight percent of the budget, so we have a surplus of revenue of a hundred forty-four thousand, one eighty-nine. And with this being December thirty-first, that's mid-year, so we should be at fifty percent across the board. Um, in regards to the bills, Mayor and Council, I present with you for your consideration to approve bills one through ten for January eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, the floor is now open for a motion to approve bills for January eleventh, items one through ten.
Make a motion to approve the bills, um, items one through ten?
Second.
And properly moved in second, questions?
Um, I'm just wanting to know the difference or explanation between number two and number three?
One is the, um, our regular monthly bill, and one is it's time to renew some of our software contracts.
So one, which one is the monthly?
The monthly bill is the ten thousand.
So that's usually a month?
That's a month, and that goes all the way across the city. That's all our lines, computers, telephones, cell phones that we have issues with, that's across the board.
Any other questions? All right, if none, all those in favor, bow your hands.
All right, uh, Mayor and Council, if I may, please, um, I want to acknowledge the fact, pass this out to you, that Chief Cooper, Officer Diaz, and Officer Majors with the City of Lake City Police Department was requested and invited to be part of President Biden's security team. On December seventeenth, I just think that that's an accomplishment, um, for three of our police, police personnel to be asked to go to Orangeburg and protect our President in the United States. So I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that Cooper is here and his team. And Mayor and Council, to let you know, uh, we, we, we have approved in prior months the process of the city taking over their sludge removal from the wastewater treatment plant. I've informed you that the twenty-yard containers arrived months ago. Uh, within the next two weeks, the sludge truck will be here, we'll give them a thirty-day notice, and then we'll start doing our own business. Uh, so that should take Republic off our bill list, and we should be able to start saving the labor side of that bill and see the fruits of our labor going forward. Um, we, I want to also let you know, we have plans, we're waiting on, uh, London Point, the people that will be building these fourteen houses at London Point, they're waiting on one more permit from DHEC, and they'll be moving forward with starting the construction of fourteen new houses at the London Point subdivision. And, um, that's all I have for you, and we have Chief Cooper to do this police report.
Do you have, um, available copies of that?
I'll have it emailed out to you, yes, ma'am. Yeah, this is just actually the sewer line, water lines that's leading for the property, it's not actually the layout for the houses itself.
Do you have that?
Uh, that has not been presented to us yet, this is the, the sewer water lines and, and the, uh, runoffs. Oh, and before, Chief Cooper, excuse me, before we get to that, Mayor and Council, I have one more thing I needed to, to bring to your attention. Um, and she, and, um, she just mentioned it to me, May tenth is a council meeting night, it's also a city holiday. Do we wish to, at your, um, approval, change the date of the council meeting? Or do we wish to wait till June to have the next one? I don't think we can wait because that's also a budget period, that's also the first vote on a budget. So would you rather have council on May eleventh or the following week?
Just do it following day?
Following day, all right, we'll set our calendar and make that accordingly. All right, thank you, thank you, Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is the Lake City meeting. For December twenty twenty-one, the stats are as follows, total cost of service, seven hundred and seventy-four. Calls for assistance from the community, uh, one hundred and twenty of those were traffic stops, uh, the alarms, burglary alarms, false alarms were at sixty-two. Calls for domestic violence, thirty-four, fifty-nine property checks conducted, twenty-two accidents were investigated, twenty-six, uh, incidents of disorder conduct, twenty-one marsting, and approximately nineteen calls for shootings and discharge of firearms in the city limit. We also had violations from traffic defense, were eight violations of legal license, simple possession of marijuana was at seven, speeding, approximately two, driving suspension, were six. As the community said earlier, in relation to the shooting, I get the idea about the shooting, and I understand the concept of what goes on with safety to the public, that is my job to suffer you as a police chief. I know what happens in the city has a ripple effect, and I know sometimes when things happen, and it's banking to its fate, I get it. We investigate calls when they come out, sometimes we're pleasant in a way of our approach, but it depends on the call itself. Sometimes we're not so pleasant because there's a lot of things we have to deal with, whether it be a shooting victim, or someone who just suffered something traumatic, or something that ongoing when we arrive and see something as soon as we can. The incidents that we're investigating now are shooting incidents, we have called multiple times when a gun is discharged within the county, you could be in Lake City City Limits, and somebody shoots a gun on airport circuit that's in the county, we still get the call, they're shooting guns, we, we get them all night. We're not the only entity that's actually doing it, it's misspelling, we know that, but I, I'm telling you right now, we're investigating, and in a couple of days, you'll see what we've been doing. Now, the sad part about it is, it affects the older generations because of traumatic experience, and the middle, uh, age type B, because they have to deal with it, because of the juveniles involved in it. See, the concept is, if you try to redirect your child and be positive, and not get into so much shenanigans, be a part of that wrong crime, a lot of the stuff we can get off, however, it's not like that in real life. In theory, it sounds, but we have a lot of individuals who are underage who commit crimes. I don't know if a lot of you have ever thought about this, but the police department falls under a branch of government called legislative body. There's a reason why we call law enforcement, we enforce the laws that the legislative body put in place that you vote on. So if the penalties and the stipulations that are placed on juveniles and young adults are lenient, it's not the police. We easy to have to bank for in there, we get it all the time, but it's not us, because we don't create the laws, we enforce the laws from the individual that you elect in office, that's it. In the upcoming days, we have some individuals that we're gonna bring, uh, before the court, because that's our job. Not to determine whether they're guilty or not, but if we have, uh, the promise of the evidence suggesting these individuals committed crimes, we can bring them onto justice, and we're gonna do that. Some of them you know, and some of you, you know, you probably wouldn't even know, or see, you know, see on the street, they walk back. Some of them are young adults, some of them are juvenile, some of them are kids, some of them you don't do, but won't say anything, and I get it, because that's family. As I said earlier, my job is to suffer you, I have zero tolerance in the company, I have zero tolerance for the crimes that are being committed by individuals or lawless, I really do. I only ask that you support the police department and the city the way you've been doing these past few years, and let this process work. Now, during this time, in the last few weeks, we've had mandates come down from the governing bodies, the Department of Juvenile Justice, and Florence County Sheriff's Office. We can arrest individuals all day, and two times on Sunday. The thing about it is, we have individuals that we identified already who are actually out on bond for attempted murder and murder. We did our job, but the courts said let them out, but yet it's the police's fault. Juvenile, transported to Florence County Detention Center, they can go to detention center for several hours, but they come back home. But the Sheriff's Office got mandates, I'm gonna reach out to them, see if you know what I'm talking about. Juvenile seventeen years of age, and the juvenile is being charged with their following class felonies, or charged with a crime to carry fifteen years or more, they can stay at the county. Like murder, attempted murder, they can go to the county, but if they don't, the law says we must release them back to their parents or guardian, or call the Department of Juvenile Justice, to which we have to go pick them up before they have seventy-two hours. After which, juvenile court can say, if you've never been to family court, they give every child that walks in front of them, every juvenile that walks in front of them is a child, cloaked in innocence. So you may think that child needs to be locked up, but the court said, you know what, I see a baby in front of me, and I'm gonna send him back home. We have individuals now that we're drafting warrants for, that we've been here last night since the shooting that happened on fifty-two. That's out on attempted murder, a bond that has nothing to do with Lake City.
But he's out.
But it's the police's fault.
But he's out.
See?
But he is out.
He's out. But that's not the police's fault, but we'll take it, because it's our job, we'll take it, we suffer, we suffer, you guys, we, we have a problem. DJJ's come out with a mandate that individuals that are going to the detention center in Columbia, or the main campus of Royal Grove Road, for us to use discretion when we, uh, send them there, to have detained because of COVID. We have some that's on acamond, heard about the incident that happened on, uh, Cold Road with the home invasion and stuff? Yeah, two of them was on acamond, we tracked them all over to the house, let it stop play, and they came from another county. It's Lake City Police's fault, but we called all three of them, we got two, third, we already got them identified, and we write, we say, he was on the spot, we Johnny on the spot. Two, three, one person, we come. It's not a matter, you can have fifteen officers on the street, but they ain't about nothing, and they can do no good. But officers that we have here, I love them and I trust them, and they do a damn good job, they really do. I can't sit in front of everybody's house, I can't, it's not my job to police all six thousand residents by myself, we have to do it as a team, we have to, we have to. If you don't call the people that phone, you know your cousin, or your cousin, or your aunt, and got a child that's over there shooting somebody's house, that's on you. That is your fault, that is not my fault, especially if you know they're doing it. Okay, we often have this concept in mind, so, y'all ever heard this thing before, they hang out with the wrong ground? Ever heard that before? You ever thought the people that you know is probably the wrong ground? Uh-huh. But that's okay, though, we gonna fix it, now the individuals we pick up, I know my phone will start ringing, oh, you know that's a child, you know that's a juvenile, it's fifteen. That's, that's not what you said, man, you wanted to stop, I'm gonna give you what you want, I'm gonna give you exactly what you want, and you gonna see the dirty laundry add up. It's gonna come to bite, all I want you to do is work with me, we can, we can do a lot together. My job is to enforce the law, my job is to make arrests, okay, I can't punish anybody, that's not my job. But I can get, I can give those victims a peace of mind knowing that the system worked on our end, that the laws are there, we're gonna enforce them. If the law says that juvenile must go to DJJ and be let back out in six hours, we have to, but everybody gets mad before we, I can't believe we let that child out, I did, my officer did, the law says they must come. But in this, forty-eight to seventy-two hours, give or take, we locate this last individual, want to confirm their age and their location. individual, want to confirm their age and their location, we put them out there for you. You probably don't know. It's going to shock some of y'all who we did. It's going to shock. But we're going to give, we're going to give you what you're paid for. We're going to give you what the city demands, which is the best representation of law enforcement. We're going to do that. And it's good things and it's bad things. Some of you I met in good times, and some of you I met in bad times. I really don't take it personally. I love what I do. I'm committed. Twenty plus years, I love it. I love it. And trust me, when you come and you make these statements about law enforcement or police, and generally, I don't even live. You're not beating me up. I want you to voice your opinion, because it's my job to suffer you. If I don't know what's going on, I can't have a hand in fixing it, right? So it's my person. Tell me what's going on, so give me a chance. That's all I want you to do, just give me a chance. If it doesn't work out for you, we need to get another legislator on. I know it's made me like that. But whatever we can do, as the police stands, please call us and let us know. Miss Hannah, I get what you're saying. The investigator's going to follow you. Sometimes we can't close cases in one hour like we see on TV on CSI. We really can't. We're going to have to work. We're going to have to work. And some of these people, especially since COVID, some of these investigations we've had, it's been kind of lengthy, and it's been kind of hard, because as you can see here right now, besides the floor, I'm doing what is not having a basketball talking. We all masked up. Some of you see each other in the streets, you wouldn't really know each other with a mask on. Now, you coupled up with somebody wearing a hoodie or ski mask or something like that, or somebody that's hiding and working in the dark, it's kind of hard. But we try our best. We really do. But they do slip up sometimes, you know? We do catch it, we get lucky, but it's not really you. It's not really so much anybody can do for a person to ride down your street, fire off a gun, and keep going. There's nothing left. We really do. You know, but we try, but call. You never know. They could, they could probably outrun us with a call, but they can't outrun their radio. Just call. Anything you have, any problems you have dealing with the city or investigation that's ongoing, if you were a victim of the crime, just, just give me a call and let's see what you do. I can't do everything, and I'm not perfect. I'm not going to lie to you, I'm not going to stand here and say I can stop all the shootings. I ain't going to do that. I'm not going to stand here and lie to y'all. But the person I catch can know, because I mean business. You're not going to shoot in my city and think you're going to get away with it. I'm not going to have it. And we work with the Sheriff's Office, in Florence County, and Williamsburg County. We also work with federal entities like DEA, the FBI, and the US Marshal. So it's coming. Approximately ten years ago, myself and Major Miles kind of shut the city down. I think every ten years, we might have to purge. Some of them just not getting out of federal prison. They get time for a new batch. And I don't mind if you don't. But the shooting has to stop, can we agree on that? Okay, I'm going to do my best. And I'll tell you, this is not, this is not fluff. I'm not going to tell you this to make you feel good. And you guys don't be in jail, I'm a singer every day. You call me, I'm coming. We're going to do our job. And we're working with the man. We really are. We're trying to get it up. We're trying to get it where it needs to be. But my officers, they, they go hard every day. They really do. I'm sorry, questions? I've got to throw a little bit.
Council members?
No questions. I just truly thank you, and I back you up, and, and I appreciate for everything that the police department is doing, and the community is doing, as far as coming forth and voicing. We don't want that to stop, we need that. They need that. Because just like you said, he's a one person, it's, it's a small force, they can't be everywhere, they, they wish they could be everywhere. But as long as the community comes together and we work together, we can conquer this, this gun violence. And it, and it does start at home, and yes, it's our young people. So we got to come together and get a hold of our young people. So our old people won't be scared to live in their own homes, and, and want to move. We don't want that. And, and I know the police department don't want that either. So I, I back you up a hundred percent. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay.
Get some lights.
And like, right, you're right.
Thank you, Chief Cooper. I have one other thing before we move forward. Mayor, y'all have this in your, what's left on your desk when you got here this evening. The water tower at the new hospital, this is something that we've been addressed, and when they asked what we wanted on the water tower, the first thing we said, put the city seal up. Well, that's over in Williamsburg County in Caves, it's not in Lake City. So when a lot of people pull down that driveway and see that tower sitting in the back of that property, and see the city seal, it doesn't have any idea what it goes to. And that's the city seal that we represent on a daily basis. So Jonathan and Donna, I got with them, and I said, we needed to get something to, city can be recognized for, we're furnishing the sewer and the water out there at the hospital in Caves in Williamsburg County. So we came up with this. And, and if you look at it, there's a little, I've also put in there a little, rebranding is what we're kind of calling it, because, you know, the city seal's a wonderful thing. We, we are admired by that, it's been forever. But to come into the twenty-first century, we want to try to get a different flavor out, get the younger people to recognize who we are. So this has some recognition here, because it's some of our buildings that's in Lake City, and it ends with our water tower. So this is what we're proposing, that we're going to send to the engineers to put on the big, huge tower at the new hospital. It'll say Lake City, South Carolina, with our emblem, Water. So I wanted everyone to be aware of that. So instead of the city seal, this is what we'll be sending. And when they pull down that driveway, it'll be recognized, oh, this is Lake City, South Thank you so very much. Mayor?
At this time, we're ready for our city council member reports, and Mr. Askins, we're going to start with you tonight.
Nothing to report.
Ms. Scott?
Something to report. So much, so much to say and done tonight, but I want to echo to my church family, what you're trying to do, a community service. Just wanted to, for Mount Clair, but for the city, a big city. We have a great plan, idea in mind, but I thank you all for letting us be able to move forward. So in another year, hopefully, we'll be able to see what we have to plan to improve the living conditions in Lake City. I thank you all for coming too. And it is so much, the violent crime, my sister live on McGregor Circuit, and every day or night, she told me, how they be cowboys back there, and she said, if I didn't own this place, I would leave. And it's so sad, and her brain took to come over, they could hear the pop, and her little grandson, now he going, that's a gun, that's a gun, you know? That I would choose to learn it, that's a gun sound. I don't know, literally, firecracker. It's Hannah saying, and through, maybe I see the book. But we want to stop the violence here in Lake City. So we come together, the police officers say they can't do by themselves. Some of them know, oh, bubba live in the house, and he, he got a gun. But they want to see it, no, don't see that gun, because he carry that gun, you know? But if, if you're going to come to the policeman, don't be honest with what's going on in your home. It, it's hard, but we know the truth, and try to get help, and we took, a lot of children need help. And a lot of them need to have a lot of mental illnesses here in Lake City. So we have to be aware of crime, and be aware of the need. And I also thank for hearing from the House about ministry about what, to help people to live in their own home and not get put out. What can we do for our community? We want Lake City to continue to grow and strive. We want people to be proud of the living in Lake City. And I said, I don't move to Lake City, girl, girl, you'll get killed, or there's shooting all the time. So thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I guess that would have been.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Councilmember Secretary.
Thank you all for coming out. Also, thank you for addressing your concerns, just to piggyback what Councilmember Scott said, and what Chief Cooper said. If you don't let us know what's going on, we don't know, we can't be everywhere at one time. So if we could just come together, hopefully, come up with a solution about these shootings, as Matty, we'll get some lighting around Lake City. And just remember, please don't forget about COVID. COVID is still out there, very serious. I just got over COVID, that's why I wasn't at the last meeting. I wasn't hospitalized or anything, but it was about to take me out. So just, please, continue to be safe, and thank you all for coming out.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming, and I did all, did all of their sentiments. Thank you for coming.
Yes. Happy New Year to everyone. I do thank everyone for coming and voicing their concerns, and suggesting is exactly what we need to continue to move Lake City forward, working together. I'd like to congratulate the new committee and board members who were appointed tonight. I trust that you all will do what needs to be done for the betterment of our communities and city. A special congratulations, or a happy anniversary, I should say, to myself and Councilmember Askins. It was a year ago that we took oath into office, so I want a happy anniversary to us both. I learned a lot, and I'm ready to learn more. Announcements that I have, well, before announcements, I do want to say to Ms. Maddie and everyone else that came out with the concern, thank you, we hear you, and we're going to definitely do what we need to do to work together to get lighting, because that is an issue in certain areas. I've seen it myself, I live in one of those areas, so I know. You're right that we need to drive through and just see the roads. I mean, we're going to work and do what we need to do to make sure that, that the community stays safe. Announcements that I have, we have MLK Day coming up. I'm sorry that I only have one flyer. We have been sharing it on social media, but the speaker for the MLK Day, and it will be by Zoom this year due to the increase of the COVID cases, the speaker will be Ms. Pastor Paula Morris, is hosted by the Florence School District Three and the Community Group of Lake City. So if anyone wants to see this, they can, but we have been sharing it on social media. And I know everybody's not on social media, but you can contact me by phone or however, for this information, or the city, because the city has the information as well. Vaccination clinic setup, hopefully, will be at Wesley United Methodist, I'm sorry, yeah, on Wesley Church on January twenty-second. I'm hoping for it to be from ten to two, I don't have all the information yet, due to the representative that I've been talking with, they've just been overwhelmed as well. Everybody is overwhelmed, but we are trying to do our best to get more testing sites and clinics in our city and community. We definitely got to take care of home. We know it's all over, but everybody's just been overwhelmed and stretched to the T. But just continue to be safe as we go through this pandemic. Also received some information, it's called Highway to Hope Mobile Clinic, and what Councilwoman Scott was talking about, about the mental issues, this actually came to me, an email from Mr. Bernard McIntosh, and like I said, I don't want to hold it up too, too much longer, but I do have this information, and it's, it's a mobile clinic for anyone that has issues with mental, for their families, for their children, for whomever, and that they can come out in a mobile and give you some services and resources by that. And that's all I have tonight. Just thank you for coming out, and can't wait to see everyone again next month.
Chief Cooper, I want to thank you and what your police officers do. When y'all make complaints, legitimate complaints about the shootings, I understand. We need more police officers. I've been arguing that. I've pushed it since I've been on council, more police officers. At the same time, when they take them to Florence, or take them to Columbia, wherever, we're through with it. We have no, we have no course as far as the sentencing, or guilty, or not guilty. People sitting up here on in Columbia, your legislators, they make the laws. They are the ones who put the judges in place, that turn these people loose. Like he said, attempted murder, got one attempted murder, and he's back out here again. That, that's ridiculous. I think you need to get on your legislators, and see what happens with that. We also got to, these, these young kids that are getting in trouble, and you can't do anything with them, they, they have parents. Parents are not responsible. Can they not be held responsible? Should they not be held responsible? I think we need to see more of that. Somebody's, somebody's responsible. When you came up, somebody was responsible. But we, we need to make sure that we hold the right people responsible. Police Department, council, police department, judges, legislators, parents. Don't push it off on somebody else to raise your kids, like they do in schools today. Raise your kids, and then come back and complain about it. But if you don't raise them, don't expect they not to end up in trouble. Thank y'all for coming, and Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you.
First, I want to thank each of you for coming out tonight. Very spirited meeting tonight. One thing I observed, what the families do, they can fall out with each other and still walk out the door and still be on one accord. We got a family in Lake City. The one reason back in California was. Late, things that's occurring now is every day. Constant. Little kids. Big kids. I tell young people one thing to think about when they get into trouble and they got to go to jail. I say, you see your boys that you hanging out with? You going to jail? You left your mama at your boys? We just got to be real and tell them what, what's really going on. My grandmother would sit down and talk, and tell us what's right and wrong. They don't get all of that. We have to hold our children. Two, one thirteen, we had a belt line on Tuesday night, how to act. We got discipline. Chief, what's the name of that program we're getting started now, you're working on now?
Youth Intervention Program?
Youth Intervention Program. We need volunteers. We need people to talk to young men and young ladies, and show them, as well as tell them what's right and what's wrong. This is a small community, so basically, in small, your adage is, if you sneeze on what, South Town, I know what time you wipe, leaving the house. We have to be real, because people are dying, and more can possibly die. Only we have to be united. We have to think about our future, and what we're leaving behind. So we thank you, and we applaud you, Police Department and Fire Department, because they go out on all kind of calls, all time of night, going into all different environments and situations. And they don't hesitate when they get the call either. They go. Let's help them out. There are things, if you need to get information, to us, it can be done. It's not everybody's business, but we've got to stand up and do it. Time is now to make it better while we still have it. And if we all know that. I want to thank the city employees, all they do, we, want to thank the council members for pitching in. We may not always agree, but we always err in the side of what's safe, and what's in the best interest of our community, based on the knowledge and understanding that we have. So work with us. We will. It's been a long, into a journey. All those in favor, thank you.